Good evening, everyone. Opening statement please.
Planning board meeting for Thursday, April 15th, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township's Planning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 8th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 8th, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 8th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. This meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature and we will bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in and you will need to give your name and address. For anyone calling in, you can raise your hand by dialing *9 and to lower your hand, dial *9 again. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Eileen. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai has been excused. Mr. Durado?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Yeah.
Chief Kudrick?
Here, ma'am.
Mr. Leggio?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro? I don't see, I haven't brought him into the meeting. I have not heard from him. Councilwoman Richmond?
Present.
Mr. Seaman?
Present.
Ms. Casper has been excused. Mr. Cristiano?
Here.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay. Could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for all of those first responders and those serving both here and abroad? Chiefs?
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Do we have an approval of minutes?
There's no minutes this evening.
Any vouchers?
There's no vouchers this evening.
Okay, any correspondence?
Yes, I sent out two ordinances that the council introduced on Tuesday, April 13th, and their next meeting is prior to our meeting, and that's when they're going to have public comment and adoption. So the board needs to comment on these ordinances this evening. The first one is ordinance 021-9, and it's regarding accessory buildings and miscellaneous structures.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just before we get started, just to reorient the board and refresh everyone's recollection, the purpose of these referrals to the Planning Board under the statute is that we review them for what they call substantial consistency with the municipal master plan, not just consistency, but substantial consistency. And just to remind everyone also, whether you find it substantially consistent or not, it doesn't mean that the ordinance can't be adopted, it just changes some of the procedures that the governing body has to go through. But our task tonight is to determine whether they're substantially consistent or not.
Great. What number are we having up first?
021-9, accessory structures.
That, okay, that's the accessory structure one, okay.
Yes.
Great. Do we need to swear in our professionals, Mr. Cuciaro?
It's not a public hearing, so, but I'll swear to Jen in any way.
Okay.
Lord, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yeah, and I'll just defer to Jen on what this is and the substantial consistency.
So this ordinance, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, has added some requirements for, you know, canopies, awnings that extend out over a patio and deck, having the same setback requirements as the deck itself. While there's nothing specifically identified in the master plan, it is not inconsistent. So I would recommend to the board that they make a finding that the ordinance 2109 is not inconsistent with the master plan.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody from the board have any questions? Okay, if no one has any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that 0-21-9 is...
Is this with the master plan?
Is it with the master plan, yes.
Great, thank you. Do I have a second?
Uh, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
And the second ordinance is ordinance 02110, which deals with permitted uses in the SED zone.
Hey, Ms. Bean?
Yes.
Or Mr. Cuciaro, do you want to, which one wants to start off first?
Oh, I'll defer to Ms. Bean.
So ordinance 2110 removes warehouse distribution as a permitted use in the SED zone. So my professional opinion is that this ordinance is inconsistent with our master plan, specifically because our latest master plan reexamination and land use amendment that was completed in 2019 recommended expanding the area in which warehouses were permitted. I want to be very clear, this is in no way opining on whether I agree or disagree with the substance of the ordinance, it's simply just stating that our master plan documents right now are inconsistent with this, with this ordinance introduction. So I would recommend, go ahead, Ron, sorry.
No, you can go ahead.
I would, I would recommend that the board make a finding that ordinance 2110 is inconsistent with our master plan.
And again, Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate, that also does not mean that the governing body cannot adopt it, it just simply changes the procedure that they have to follow.
Right. And also, is it fair to state that Ms. Robano indicated in her opening statements that if the public has any comments, is that the, is at the council meeting that they should address those comments?
Yeah, that's the public hearing, the second reading of the ordinance, any member of the public or interested party who wishes to be heard can be heard there because that's where the ordinance is going to be adopted or rejected, not here.
Great, thank you. Does anybody from the board have any questions? Okay, if no one has any questions, I'll entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Well, and that would be moving that the proposed ordinance is not substantially consistent with the master plan.
Okay, we'll have a second.
I second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr., uh, Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Give me one second, my computer dropped off the agenda here. Okay, is that it for correspondence?
No, I have more. I have an email from Ken Cape, he is the attorney for New Horizon Properties LLC, which is our, one of the applications on tonight's agenda. He has asked that this be carried as two or more of his applicants' professionals have a conflict tonight, and he has asked to be carried to June 17th, 2021, with no further notice.
Okay.
All right, so let me just make the announcement, Mr. Chairman. The application of New Horizons Properties LLC, case number SP1078, be carried to the board's June 17th, 2021 meeting. At this time, that meeting is also going to be a remote meeting. The instructions to access that meeting will be available at least 10 days prior to the meeting, there'll be no further notice to property owners. All supporting documents are on file and can be accessed via the town's website.
I'm sorry, Ron, did you say it'll be carried to the June 21st meeting?
17th.
17th, okay. Those are expiration dates coming up.
And that is with no further notice, correct?
Correct, no further notice to property owners.
Thank you. I also have an email from John Jackson's office regarding Cabin Realty, which is on tonight's agenda. He has also asked that this application be carried to June 3rd with no further notice. It is my understanding they're making some modification to one of the plan sheets.
Yeah, my understanding, Mr. Chairman, is that they're submitting a revised lighting plan to address some areas that have not yet been addressed on their plan. So the application of Cabin Realty LLC, case number SP-1081, will be carried to the board's June 3rd, 2021 meeting, 7 o'clock, that will be a virtual meeting. The instructions to access the meeting will be available at least 10 days prior on the town's website, and all documents are also available on the town's website. Any future documents that will be submitted for that application will also be available at least 10 days prior on the town's website. There'll be no further notice to property owners.
Okay, great, thank you. And so the only application we have on the agenda then is SP993A for natural gas.
Correct.
That's correct.
Thank you. Is that all for the correspondence?
That's it for correspondence.
All right, we get into resolution. First resolution is case number SP-1082. Eligible voters are Mr. Durado, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Cristiano, and myself. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve SP1082.
Do I have a second, please?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Joe Cristiano.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, next resolution is case number SP-993A. Eligible voters are Mr. Durado, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Cristiano, and myself. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Leggio, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Chief Kudrick. Thank you, roll call, please.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhouse? Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Next resolution is case number SP-1027A. Eligible voters are Mr. Durado, Mr. Husser, Chief Kudrick, Councilwoman Richmond, Mr. Seaman, and Mr. Cristiano.
Motion to memorialize.
Second.
Second was Mr. Cristiano again?
Yes.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Okay, next resolution is case number FD-2928F-A. Eligible voters are Mr. Durado, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, and myself.
Make a motion.
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Okay, next resolution is case number FD-2993. Eligible voters are Mr. Durado, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Cristiano, myself. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve SD-2993.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Okay, next resolution is FD-2996. Eligible voters are Mr. Husser, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Do I have a motion?
Motion to memorialize.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Seaman. Roll call, please.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Okay, last resolution is case number SP-1083. Eligible voters are Mr. Husser, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a memorial, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
John, I think you've, I see him.
I made a move.
Yes?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can. That was a yes on that resolution, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse? Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Okay, did I miss any in the list by accident?
Nope, you did perfect, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Any submission waivers?
No submission waivers this evening.
Okay, our first application for this evening is case number SP-993A, New Jersey Natural Gas Company. Mr. Cuciaro, do we need to swear in our professionals again?
You swear or affirm the testimony about to give us boards the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Ms. Bean, you're on mute.
Ms. Bean?
Oh. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Skidmore.
Good evening, board members. Nancy Skidmore from the Law Firm of Connel Foley, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, New Jersey Natural Gas Company. This is an application for preliminary, pardon me, amended preliminary and final site plan approval for an addition to the existing NJNG liquefied natural gas facility in order to incorporate a power-to-gas component. As the board may already be aware, the site is about 103 acres in area, and it's located on Lakewood Farmingdale Road, just south of the Victory Road intersection. This property is located in the SED zone, and the facility has been in operation since 1973. There have been several approvals by this board over the course of the facility's operation, the most recent of which was in 2014, and that was for, to permit the liquefaction of natural gas on-site. This, for this power-to-gas addition, all proposed site improvements will be located within the existing fenced facility area. The existing and proposed use is permitted in the SED zone, and no variances or design waiver are required in connection with this application. With me tonight, I have Craig Sanders and Chris Chen with New Jersey Natural Gas. I also have Frank Little with Owen Lowell Associates. Mr. Sanders and Mr. Little will be presenting the application, and Mr. Chen will be sharing our exhibits during the presentation. In addition, I have with me a few outside experts. I don't intend to call them as affirmative witnesses, but they may be required for particular questions that the board may have, and they are Paul Bradfield with CBNI. Steve Samansky with NEL Hydrogen. And Doug Wilford with Cooper Engineering.
Who's your, your first witness?
My first witness will be Mr. Little, but I'm just checking if my court reporter, Kim Mahoney, is on?
Yes, do you want her brought in?
Yeah, I think, just, just in case, if that's okay.
Sure, do you need the other three that you just mentioned brought in, or?
Yeah, let's do that, just, just to make it easier.
Okay, everyone's in.
Great. Just as a matter of housekeeping, we did prepare, mail, and publish a notice of this hearing to property owners within 200 feet, and it, it was also published in the Asbury Park Press. We, an affidavit of service and publication was supplied to Ms. Robano, I believe, last week. In addition, the exhibits that we intend to present this evening were also supplied to Ms. Robano on Monday, so within the 48-hour deadline required under the new regulations.
That is correct.
My first witness tonight will be Mr. Little. I, I believe, I was just, go ahead, Mr. Cuciaro.
Mr. Little, do you swear or affirm testimony about to give us boards the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Can you just briefly qualify, Mr. Little?
Of course. I believe Mr. Little has been qualified for this board in the past, but I'd ask Mr. Little to go through his background and experience in the fields of engineering and planning.
Yes, my name is Frank Little. I'm a licensed professional engineer, professional planner, and certified municipal engineer in the state of New Jersey. Received my licenses between 1981 and 1984. Appeared before numerous boards across the state and have been qualified as a engineer and a professional planner, and I appeared before this board in 2014 on this same facility for the LNG plant.
We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And this, again, just for the record, this is, I believe, marked Exhibit A9, it's an eight-page PDF presentation. Mr. Little, can you take the board through a general overview of where we're talking about, and I think most people are familiar, but where we're talking about in the township of Howell, the, the sighting of the proposed addition, as well as zoning, and the uses and zoning in and around the area?
Yes, the first, the first slide that we have before us is an aerial photography, photography of the, of the LNG site. The site's approximately 3,300 feet south of Victory Road. It's directly across the street from the, the solar farm. It's surrounded by woods on all sides. The entrance road, the gate, the main gate to the entrance is approximately 800 foot off of the main roadway. The site contains 103 acres, and approximately 30 acres roughly is cleared and consists of the LNG facility you see in the, the center of your screen. The site on the north, south, and west is surrounded by the SED zone, and I believe to the northeast and southwest, we have the AR6 zone. The uses are permitted in the zone, and there are no variances required. The proposed project is totally within the fenced area of the LNG facility. It's already disturbed area, and nothing's being cleared, so it's a perfect location for that. If we can go to sheet four of seven of my drawings, this depicts the proposed facilities in the southern portion of the, the LNG yard. In the upper-left corner is the 2,400-square-foot storage garage, which is a pole barn-type building, which will be utilized to store equipment for the entire facility. Below that is the photovoltaic solar canopy, 311 foot by 75. It's a height of not to exceed 15 feet, and it contains about 1,080 panels. See, then in the lower right is the hydrogen process improvements. So going through these, the first one on this is a water supply well. I want to talk a little bit about that, that well. Currently onsite is another well used for the facility. That well is 450 feet deep. It's in the Mount Laurel Aquifer, and it provides potable, clean well water at that depth. This well, when drilled, will also be at that same depth. The usage of water for this facility, for this process, equates to about two to four households of water per year. As a result of the process, it requires water to be filtered, which produces some excess water, which has to be discharged and into an underground tank. As a result of the de minimis amount of water that's coming out of this process, New Jersey Natural Gas chose to install the buried tank, because it made the most common, it was the most common sense and logical solution to handle this excess water. So the storage tank, as a result of the minimal water that's left over from the process, the tank has to be emptied two times a month. So via truck, they'll come in, they'll remove the water, and dispose of it offsite. So the tank will only contain water, there's no added chemicals in this process, it's pure water, and there's a excess discharge of water, which is going to be handled by this practical method of an underground storage tank. The other items associated with the system are an electrolyzer container, I think Chris is pointing to these as we go, the chiller, an electrical and instrumentation enclosure, a natural gas emergency backup generator, a power transformer. Then we have the underground tank, which I previously talked about. And then we have the hydrogen storage tank with pad-mounted instrumentation. Other items on the site, site lighting, we don't require any additional site lighting. There's sufficient lighting on poles throughout the facility. Typically, there would be lights on the entry doors to each one of the components, as well as to entry doors on the storage garage. As far as site circulation goes, we have access roads around the entire perimeter of the proposed solar power-to-gas facility, which will provide access for the gas company's equipment, as well as any other emergency access that's required to the facility. Also, refuse management, there is no refuse being generated by this facility. Currently onsite, there is a refuse container, which is emptied by a, by a commercial hauler paid for by the gas company. Let's see, I wanted to go back to the aerial, which was the first exhibit. And again, emphasize the fact that the existing facility is buffered and screened by dense woods around the entire perimeter. So the next item that I need to discuss is your compliance with design standards for solar energy generation facilities. There are four main components to that. The first one, going back to sheet four of seven, is fire access. Again, we have access roads completely around the facility for full access to all the components associated with it. There's also an existing fire Knox box that gives the fire department access to the LNG facility, and that will not be changed, so that'll continue the way it is now, and fire departments are aware of that. The second item in, in the regs is, are we impacting any DEP-regulated land? Again, we're totally within the disturbed fenced area of the facility. There's no outside disturbance, and as a result, we meet that requirement. The third item again was, the solar facilities need to be screened from public ways. Again, we showed you the aerial, we're completely surrounded by woods, and comply with that requirement. And the last requirement is a decommissioning plan, which we've developed or had the gas company develop, and that was submitted on behalf of the gas company to the board and its professionals. And I believe those are my comments at this point.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Just, just one question, I want to confirm, the applicant does not require any variance or design waiver relief, the proposed amendment is completely conforming with all ordinance requirements, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
It's, I'm permitted to move on, I would present my next witness, who is Craig Little from New Jersey Natural Gas Company.
Well, before you, before you move on, if you could just give me a...
Well, before you move on, if you could just give me a second.
Sure.
Mr. Little, did you see the comment from our environmental commission about taking the excess water and trying to figure out how to filter it back into the local aquifer instead of transporting it off of site?
Yes, I saw that. Yeah, I saw that, and that's why I wanted to stress a little bit about the well, because the amount of water uses here is very minimal. I mean, it's, you know, to put wells in and things like that and get permitting, it just doesn't, it's not logical. I mean, there's so little water coming out of here. I mean, truthfully, this tank is 2,000 gallons, at the most, would be in there. And if we end up taking it out two times a month, the most that would go would be 4,000 gallons, and that ends up being 48,000 gallons a year, and a regular residence only is allotted 60,000. So we're not even transporting, we're transporting less than one residence's water off-site.
Okay.
So it made no sense to go the other way.
Okay. And just to confirm, I heard in your testimony, the water is in no way, shape, or form contaminated? In your opinion, it would still be kind of potable?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, this will be the safest item ever trucked on a New Jersey road.
Thank you.
I guess, Brian, if I may, and there was a pretty significant presentation yesterday in front of the environmental commission, which was very good, and you'll hear Craig soon, and he was great, and Frank was great. I'm still, and it's a question the environmental commission still has through this day to right now, and it's something I'm going to bring up again. We understand that the water is being, it's going through an electrolysis process, okay? There's no contaminants. What makes it needed to be trucked off-site and put into an underground storage tank for off-site disposal? If there's no contamination, tell me, I understand there's this ASTM spec that you have to meet to do your process. But just because it doesn't meet that ASTM spec doesn't necessitate it for off-site disposal. I'm a little confused as to why you're trucking it off-site. Is it a pH matter? Is there some type of, is it, you know, a metal that's in the water? What is it that you, why are you trucking it off-site? And why does it need and in an underground storage tank? It's kind of going barbaric ways. You're tempting fate, put it into an AST if you're going to do anything. And my second comment is, are there bollards around this hydrogen tank that have on-site?
Yes. Yes, there are bollards around it. They're shown on the plan.
What about on the left side of it?
If there, we don't have them shown, but that's not an issue. We can certainly add them. You know, that's not a problem. We can put them around the whole site, the whole facility, but, you know, we need to get access to it. But yeah, I have no issue putting them around the back or the side. You know, but yeah, the bollards are not an issue.
Frank, are you able to answer the first part of that question, or do we need to defer that?
Here's what, I mean, when you get, this water's being filtered also in order to use it in the process. So there's excess water, and it gets discharged. Typically, in a home system, this excess water from filtration goes down the sewer system. We're not in the sewer service area, so we need to put it somewhere. And we are proposing a holding tank, which is the simplest thing the gas company can do and the most cost-effective. And I don't even want to hear cost, but it's so simple to bring a truck in two times a month, pump it out, and typically you take it to maybe a sewer plant, you put it in a manhole.
Why can't you just discharge it back to the aquifer?
I, that's going to require, you know, extensive permitting, and you're going to have to have another well 450 foot deep to go back. We already, you know, these wells aren't cheap.
What about putting it into a septic system like the environmental commission recommended in their report?
Yeah, but again, why do I want to put a septic system in, you know, developing a septic system? It's much easier to just have them fall away. We're not trying to hide anything here. You know, we're just saying it's the most economical, most common sense thing to do.
So in essence, you're hauling off clean water?
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
In New Jersey, natural gas needs a community pool.
Maybe. I don't know. Maybe you can water the ball field down the street. I don't know. But we can't, we can't just dump it on the ground, apparently. So, or we would. All right.
Fair enough, and we appreciate your honesty. But I'm sure that other people may have some comments about that.
We're ready to answer.
Next witness, please, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my next witness, as I mentioned earlier, is Craig Sanders from New Jersey Natural Gas Company. You're on mute, Craig. Actually, we're all on mute, it looks like. Okay.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Craig, K-R-A-I-G, Sanders, S-A-N-D-E-R-S.
Mr. Sanders is an employee with New Jersey Natural Gas, so I'm not going to qualify him as an expert, but I want to give, have him give you the, his background and experience with NGNG and in his education, so you can understand a little bit about that before he provides you with his testimony.
And Mr. Sanders, just before you start all that, what is your title?
I'm Vice President at New Jersey Natural Gas.
Okay. And you can go through the questions that counsel asked you now.
Thanks, Nance. My name is Craig Sanders. I'm Vice President, New Jersey Natural Gas. I'm responsible for the transmission and high-pressure distribution systems here at New Jersey Natural Gas. I received my civil engineering degree in 1987 from Stanford University, and I'm currently a member of the American Gas Association, several committees, including supplemental gas, transmission operations, and transmission measurement groups. Also a member of the Northeast Gas Association Operations Group, the Society of Gas Operators, as well as the New Jersey Utilities Association. I have 34 years of system engineering experience, as well as design, construction, and operations, 22 of which have been here at New Jersey Natural Gas in Wall, New Jersey. I'm responsible for the safe maintenance and operations of our transmission and distribution facilities, which includes our pressure reduction stations, our critical valves, which we use to segment areas of our system, our gas control facilities, which are our remote monitoring facilities, and it's a department that I'm responsible for that controls and monitors our entire system pressures, flows, temperatures, et cetera. And our liquefied natural gas facilities, one of which is in, cited in Howell Township, as Frank mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I think you were going to take the board initially through an overview of New Jersey Natural Gas's mandate in the state of New Jersey, as well, it's an initiative in this case to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and then get to the heart of the matter, which is our power-to-gas provision.
Yeah, next slide, please. New Jersey Natural Gas has been providing safe, reliable service to our customers for nearly 70 years. We have over 500,000 customers throughout Morris, Mammoth, Middlesex, Ocean, and Burlington Counties. And as a lifeline service provider, we are focused primarily being a regulated utility. We're focused primarily on providing this service in the most efficient and cost-effective way for our customers, heating and cooking loads throughout the year. Next slide. Being a natural gas utility, we are also very sensitive to global warming and reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, as I'm sure your municipality is focusing on projects in that area as well. We are voluntarily focused on reducing our emissions by 60% net by 2030. And I just want to give you a little background as to our commitment over the past decade, which has been expressed through our investments in our infrastructure, which makes New Jersey Natural Gas one of the most economically and environmentally sound LDCs in the nation, but most certainly in New Jersey itself. We're focusing on our near-term projects in a variety of areas, energy efficiency programs, we're decarbonizing our fleet, our facility operations, as well as our gas network, which is a subject of our application tonight. Our initiatives are around decarbonizing our natural gas network through a variety of projects, which are in two areas currently, which would be renewables, renewable natural gas, using landfill gas, biogas, et cetera, and the subject of tonight's application, which would be our hydrogen projects, which is, this is the first of our hydrogen projects that are on our roadmap. And although the process itself, the electrolysis process, is very well-established, used by the US Navy to generate oxygen in submarines for decades, this particular application where we're injecting or rather blending into our system is among the first in the Northeast. And so the process itself is well-established, very safe, very reliable. And we are looking to take advantage of the technology by helping to reduce our carbon footprint by blending with our natural gas system, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. In addition to our current initiatives, we're also focusing in terms of our capital expenditures. Going forward, we're significantly investing, and by investment, that implies commitment for our emissions reductions and our other sustainability projects going forward. Next slide, please. So how are we going to decarbonize our network? We're looking at the power-to-gas system itself. And what the power-to-gas system is, in a sentence, is that solar energy is being used to produce emissions-free hydrogen. And the system itself, the electrolysis system, is a very sophisticated system itself, but I'll try to step through functionally what is occurring here. And we're taking water, onsite well water, which is fed into our electrolyzer system. It's also, as Frank mentioned, will be treated or filtered prior to the use in the system itself because of the requirements for very highly purified water. The electrolysis system, again, is using that water in combination with solar power to separate the hydrogen from the oxygen. The oxygen, as a byproduct of the process, will be vented to the atmosphere, and the hydrogen will be placed into our storage buffer. And a little bit about the buffer itself. It is very similar in nature to a receiver tank that you would use for compressed air, et cetera. It allows us to manage the flows downstream demands in a more stable way. It provides a reservoir, so to speak, for the hydrogen prior to being blended into the system. And following the buffer vessel, that hydrogen would be blended into our 60-pound distribution system out on Lakewood Farmingdale Road. So at a high level, just talking about the functional components here, hopefully this gives you an illustration of the process itself and the process flows. Next slide, please. Frank mentioned this again. We're in a very, very large buffered area here on Lakewood Farmingdale Road, and Frank already mentioned where we're located and the proximity we are to Victory Road. So, next slide, please. Frank covered this, the components as well during his presentation. But again, just stepping through the key facility elements, the water well, the solar array, the electrolysis system itself, the buffer vessel, where we're connecting to our system, again, would be within our fenced-in area as well. We'll tie into our 60-pound system there. We have the electrical and instrumentation enclosure, as well as the underground discharge water tank, which would, again, we discussed the disposal twice per month. Next slide, please. Operational impacts on our existing staff. Currently, we're staffed during normal business hours, 8 to 4. No weekends unless we're actually operating. At 8 to 4, we have nine employees that man this facility. No additional staffing will be required because the system will be remotely operated and automated, automatically operated by software similar to other locations that we have. Again, the traffic impact is very minimal due to the small amount of water that is required for the process itself. And as a condition of prior resolutions, we're also not changing the fact that we have already agreed and we're continuing to agree to no overnight parking on the system within the facility itself. Sorry. Next slide, please, which is the, a very important slide that I'm sure that you are very interested in, which is safety. As a regulated utility, we are governed by the partner transportation. We're inspected periodically by the EPU, who manages that process out of the Trenton office, build offices. And we are continuing in our tradition of highly regulated designs and constructions, our highly trained personnel that are manning our facilities. And it speaks to our safety record for a facility. Again, we've been in, been commissioned here since 1973. We've never had an incident regarding LNG, and we continue to take pride in our safety record here. And this particular installation will fall in the same vein, will be constructed and designed according to various standards, including NFPA 2 and the ASME Boiler and Pressure Vessel Code itself, which cites and manages the construction, installation, and sighting for the vessel itself. NFPA 2 is the standard that is used to govern the design and sighting requirements for hydrogen processes and generation. From a security and safety standpoint, again, our facility is already remotely monitored 365, 24/7 in Wall, New Jersey, through our gas control group that I mentioned earlier. Gas control, it are the eyes and ears of our entire network. Their role is to monitor for any upsets or any alarms, flows, pressures, temperatures, et cetera. And so we're continuing in that vein to use our existing control monitoring system. On-site, we have, as we do at our LNG facility. On site, we have, as we do at our LNG facility, various hazard detection systems. Again, the engineering controls here are meant to alleviate and mitigate any of the abnormal operating conditions, so we'll have gas detectors throughout the process. We'll have also thermal detectors as well that will manage or monitor the heat of the process, and in case there's any upset there, smoke detectors as well that we will have in the enclosures. If there's a violation of any of our protocols for hazard detection, next system kicks in, which would be our emergency control system. Just like any other process facility, we'd have our emergency controls automated based on a various, varying numbers of upset conditions could violate our rules and would cause the system to shut down. We control the source, again, mitigating any risk associated with the product itself. Our personnel on site also have the ability to manually, there'll be manual pull stations as well to shut the process off if there is an upset in the normal operating condition. As we are today, we're entirely fenced in the facility there. We have area-wide cameras that will be monitoring not only LNG facility, but also the new power to gas system as well. And we are also very sensitive to our first responder community. By code, by DOT code, we sponsor annual drills with local first responders, fire departments, Ramtown, Howell, sometimes Freehold is involved for our annual drills, either at Howell. We have a second facility down in Stafford Township, which we also would have a drill alternating years, and for decades, we've been members of the Howell OEM, the LEPC Committee, which due to COVID, we did not meet at all during 2020, to my knowledge, but we have been a member of the, of the LEPC for quite some time. Next slide. Moving on from how safe and safety, our safety concerns and controls are in place, the key component here is focusing on, as a natural gas company, focusing on reducing our carbon footprint. This process, again, the benefits are tremendous in terms of producing zero emissions hydrogen. We're also blending this into our system, which will allow our customers in Howell to take benefits of reducing their carbon footprint, as well as offsetting 181 tons of CO2 equivalent. No impact, again, on the surrounding buffer that we have, we're developing on the previous, previously disturbed areas. Again, as Frank mentioned, very minimal water usage, two to four homes per year, and because we are powering this system with a solar array, we are maximizing our use of renewable energy in concert with our 60% reduction target for 2030. So, next slide, please. In conclusion, I just wanted to, again, point you to the fact that we are focused, even as a so-called fossil fuel company, we're focusing on a clean energy future by reducing our carbon footprint. This power to gas system fits this particular initiative superbly. We're locating on our existing footprint, and we're focusing on reducing the greenhouse gas emissions from our customers in general, but specifically for our residential customers here in Howell Township. Thank you very much.
Very nice presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Appreciate the information. Does anybody from the board have any comments or questions?
We do.
Go ahead, Mr. Gerardo.
Does this increase any of your distribution network, or is this just adding capacity?
We won't be expanding. Our existing infrastructure will be reused, and that's the beauty of this particular process, is that we're, the injection of the, or the blending of the hydrogen is displacing the equivalent volume of natural gas. So there won't be any additional facilities required. We're reusing our existing piping network, and again, the focus is on decarbonizing, decarbonizing our network. And I'm sorry, there's, I'm in my office, and there's someone vacuuming outside, so hopefully you can still hear me.
You can't hear it. It's okay. Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Mr. Christiano.
I'd like to know what the pressure is at the buffer vessel.
The pressure is approximately 450 pounds at the vessel, and it will be reduced down to 60 pounds feeding out into our system.
Okay.
Eight to 60.
The, I'd like to go over the, your hazard detection, maybe emergency protocol. If you detect a alarm, does it ring your home station, or does it ring 911, or does it ring local Howell PD? How does that work?
Excellent question. Being that we are the subject matter experts, the alarm would be sent to our gas control facility, and we will make an assessment as to what resources that we need. If, you know, for example, if there are incidences that the first responders are aware of first, that protocol will kick in place, and we'll, you know, obviously respond to, to that particular scenario, but the alarming will not be sent to 911 or anything, because we will have to make the assessment. If we do get an alarm of it or an upset, again, the protocol here is to, to eliminate the source of gas, and we will shut the process down. So if we have excess flow, if we have minimal pressures, excessive pressures, et cetera, it immediately will shut the process down, and then we will make an assessment following that in terms of make safe and, and then, and then, you know, and the lot, so to speak.
Couple of more questions. What is the maintenance procedure on your vessel that holds 450 pounds? Is it a monthly, a yearly, quarterly? How does that work? Or is there maintenance at all?
The vessel itself will be inspected annually, as we do our tanks on site today. We have a third-party metallurgist that will come in and make assessments of the unit. We don't expect there to be very much maintenance on it, but we do, will do our testing of the, you know, safety controls. The vessel itself will be examined and inspected on an annual basis.
Is this a man site? Is there somebody who was?
Yeah, we're a man during normal business hours, but continuously monitored. So our staff personnel are there during the week, Monday to Friday, but we are monitored, again, completely by our gas control center after hours. Even when our personnel leave for the day, we're a 24/7 operation, and as such, we're constantly monitoring this facility today, and we have been for many, many decades.
Thank you, sir. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Seaman. You're muted.
So this is just a general question. I certainly don't know, but I think you may. As far as like, the whole blending of the hydrogen with natural gas, is there more volatility to that, just as a compound than what we're currently using in our homes now?
Yeah, very, very good question. Because of the blend rates, we're looking at blending at approximately 15% or lower by volume. The, it will have no effect on your equipment. Your appliances are able to run as they do today on that blend, but the volatility, the properties of natural gas because of the mixture will not be altered because of the blend rates.
Anything else, Mr. Seaman? One last call for anybody with questions. Okay, seeing none, counselor, next witness, please.
I have no more witnesses. Obviously, unless there's any other questions that either Craig or Frank want to handle.
Well, let's see if our professionals have any questions. Do any of our professionals have questions?
So, Mr. Chairman, I mean, essentially, the engineer had already made a resubmission, which addressed all of our technical items. I think we have one comment relative to a detail, so as long as they agree to that, I have nothing further. I felt like the presentation was very thorough and complete, and addressed all the items in our report.
So there, just for the record, Ms. Newman, is there any variances or relief of any sort required for this application?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you.
We feel similar, you know, there's no variances. This meets all the requirements, all the necessary requirements. We really have nothing on this application.
Okay, Mr. Gutierrez, do you have any comments?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Well, if no one has any questions, councilor, do you mind if I open it to the public?
Not at all.
Okay. Ms. Ribero, we're going to open it to the public, and as usual, we're going to give them about a minute and a half to, to make themselves known that they have a question to ask. I believe the procedure is use the raise your hand feature.
And, and Mr. Chairman, is there a question or any comments also?
Correct, thank you for the clarification. Or I believe if they're on a telephone, it is star nine, is that correct?
That is correct.
So you can dial star nine to unmute yourself. Let me say something. Okay, it is now 8:04. We'll start the clock there. Ms. Ribero, please open it to the public, please.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public. Anyone wishing to ask questions or comments on this application, please use the raise your hand feature, so I can bring you into the meeting. If you're on the telephone, you need to use star nine. I'll leave it open for a couple of minutes.
Thank you. Please note, Ms. Ribero, one minute has passed.
Any members of the public, if you have questions or comments, now is your chance. Please raise your hands and come to the meeting and ask your questions or comments. I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay. We're going to close the public portion of the meeting. Does anybody have any other questions? Seeing none, counselor, would you like to summarize, please?
I'd like to thank you for allowing us to appear before you this evening. This is a really, pardon me? Can you hear me?
I got nothing but feedback. I missed the first part of your statement. If you could repeat, please.
That's all right. What I'd say is, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to appear before you this evening. This is a really exciting project for New Jersey Natural Gas. We're really excited to present it to you. You asked some really insightful questions, and we're looking forward to getting going. So much appreciated for your time, especially given the state of events this year and last year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so for case number SP-993A, New Jersey Natural Gas Company, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve SP-993A Alpha.
A second. A second. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Gerardo?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes, is this going to include the ballards that was recommended by Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio? Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Town House?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, master plan update. Since we don't have Mr. Provay, but we got Mr. Leggio, one of the things that I got, I got an email from the town manager, not town manager, the town engineer. He asked us if you guys could start taking a look at the ERI. Eileen has emailed that back out to everybody. I believe I saw the email, is that correct?
Yes, I actually emailed it today, but it's not the actual document. It's a link to the document. The document is too large to email, so if anybody has trouble with the link, let me know.
Great, thank you. So, Mr. Leggio, if you could please bring that to your master plan subcommittee meeting next week?
Yeah, next Thursday at 5:30, we are meeting.
Yes, and links were sent out for the meeting information via Zoom, and a notice was published that the meetings would all start at 5:30 for the master plan.
Okay, Mr. Leggio, you were able to get that information for the link?
I received it, like Mrs. Ribano said, it's large, so I'm going to open it on a, on a regular laptop.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, I was told he put in a budget for, for the master plan committee, and hopefully, when we get through the budget process, that budget is still hold, and I'm sure Councilwoman Richmond will let us know.
Yes, well, just so you know, Ms. Beam was at the last meeting, she's been at the last two meetings. We introduced our budget with the proposal amount that Ms. Beam recommended, and it was introduced. Hopefully, it will carry and be passed on August 11th, our next meeting, and then you guys will have the money to move forward with that. Jen, thank you for coming to our meetings and enduring all the fun.
And Mr. Leggio, I'll be there next week at 5:30, so we can go over everything at that time, but at this point, we really haven't done much, so there's really nothing at this time to update, but it'll be a good kickoff start for us.
Great.
Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Gutierrez, do we have any reason to go into executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I think we're, we're at the end of the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Moved.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
And everybody have a great day. We'll see you as believe.
Have a great night. Have a good weekend.
Our next meeting is not until May 13th, because we usually, if it was in person, there's usually a national day of prayer, so we've always moved that meeting to the second Thursday, so it's May 13th, and then there's one the following week at May 20th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye, everyone.